Order to begin, I will call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you would now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ben.
Grand Quiz.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Galketter.
Here.
Murren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
File.
Here.
Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
And a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move, Your Honors.
Second. No discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, that moves us to item number twenty-three on your city council agenda. Special presentations, we've got three different proclamations to read, bear with me, please. First one for Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Josh Mooney, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, by the power vested in me do hereby proclaim April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen as Arbor Day in the City of Norfolk, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day. Is there anyone here who received a proclamation tonight? It moves us to proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Whereas April eleventh, two thousand and eighteen marks the fiftieth anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title Twelve of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas the Norfolk Housing Agency and the Norfolk Housing Development Division of the City of Norfolk are committed to highlight the Fair Housing Law, Title Twelve of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Josh Mooney, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, by the power vested in me do hereby proclaim April two thousand and eighteen as Fair Housing Month. Is there anyone here tonight to accept the Fair Housing Proclamation? And finally, proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Norfolk Police Fire Communications Center. And public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact of public emergency services, and public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And public safety telecommunicators of the City of Norfolk have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminal suppression of fires and treatment of patients. And each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I Josh Mooney, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me do hereby proclaim April eighth through fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Norfolk, and encourage citizens to honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizen and city and citizens safe. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor and Council for the proclamation. These folks are the tip of the spear. When the call comes in, they are the ones that, most importantly, take the situation from the citizen's point of view and articulate the need for whatever resources there, whether it's police, fire, or a combination thereof. Without our dispatchers, we are lost, we're stranded, and we're alone oftentimes. So we need that point of contact back to the emergency dispatch center, and our citizens desperately need that. And I could tell you that we have the best dispatchers in the world, in my opinion. They do a fantastic job. If you ever want to see professionalism and honor in a place that's a beehive of opportunity and activity with high intensity, it's in that dispatch center when the chips are down and the calls are coming in on top of them. And as you might imagine, nine-one-one calls don't come in singles usually, they come in multiples. And oftentimes, they're the same call, and oftentimes, they're the same call, and then intermixed in there is another call, or another call that's a different emergency completely. So they have to sort that out and get the resources to the places they need to be, contact the officers out in the field, give them directions, instructions, and do the same with the citizens, whether it's starting just tonight. For instance, we had a, right before the meeting, we had a cardiac arrest here in town, and the dispatchers were doing that very thing, giving instructions to the caller, and they got a, it's my understanding that they got a good response, the patient had a good response before the medics got there. So that's the kind of stuff that they do every day, so we're proud of them.
Chief?
Does a great job keeping them smoking down there and doing well. So we're proud of our dispatchers, and thanks for the proclamation, Mayor.
Thank you, Shane. Appreciate you being here to represent the dispatchers. I had to use the service myself just a few days ago for coming upon a traffic accident, and had very quick, very professional, very clear service from the dispatchers. Often an unsung job, but very important, obviously, so thank you. All right, that moves us to our public hearings and related action portion of the agenda. Item number twenty-six, I will open this public hearing to consider submitting a grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in CDVG funds for a tourism development grant to make improvements to Miracle Skate Park, which will include handicap accessibility for both participants and spectators. And to kick this off, we'll look to Jan Merrill from the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. Evening, Jan.
Good evening. And like the mayor said, the City of Norfolk has requested three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in CDVG funds for a tourism grant, which three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand will be used for removal of architectural barriers and to make Miracle Skate Park handicap accessible for both participants and spectators. Eight thousand dollars will be used for construction management, and fifteen thousand will be used for general admin. The city is going to provide the one thousand fourteen hundred, forty, four hundred and fifty dollars, or thirty-five percent match, that is required with the grant, and the total project cost is four hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Jan. Any questions?
Jan, the one hundred and fourteen thousand that the city's providing as a match, that also goes to the ADA accessibility stuff, then?
Yes, it will. It'll be all part of it. I think a while back, the city said they would do one hundred and twenty-five thousand. The match is only a hundred and fourteen that we need, but I think the park is going to need the rest of that to finish up a few things that maybe the grant won't take care of. I think there are some representatives of the skate park here tonight, I don't know if some of them would like to...
Sure. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so at this time.
Do you have any more questions for me?
Not for now, thanks, Jan.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
My name is Anthony Thompson, I'm from Norfolk, Nebraska, and I'm the president of Good Life Action Sports.
Anthony, can we have you sign in right quick? Thank you.
Any questions I can answer? I'll try my best and see what we can do here.
Why don't you walk us through the timeline of this? Because we've had, we had a discussion about making improvements to the skate park about two years ago now, right? That was the kickoff of this, and there's been a process.
We started our improvement around August twenty-fourteen. We made it to speak with you and the council at the time of July twenty-fifteen, when you guys decided we could do a matching kind of fundraising thing to try to get this park done. August of twenty-sixteen, we got our fiscal sponsorship with the Norfolk Area Community Foundation Fund, so we could take donations and offer tax deductions for those donations. And since then, really, we've been working on one-on-one solicitations. We did, oh, probably a dozen fundraisers each year, even from donation jars to selling t-shirts, to whatever we could do to try to raise some interest, raise some awareness, and put some money in the bank for this thing. We continue to work. Our next step was to get grants, so we were really excited when we formed this new team project, because that's, there's a lot of communities going that route where grants are funding skate parks entirely now, and, you know, that's just great for community. But, so that's where we're at today, at this point. We've done the fundraising, we continue to do the fundraising, we continue to seek one-on-one donors. I've got maybe a dozen donation packets out right now where we're waiting to get some follow-ups. Last year was a bad year for that, everyone had donated to some other projects already and requested that we come back in twenty-eighteen, so we're going to follow up this year and get back to them, and hopefully this year they can kick in. We do have one large donor, the Carson Foundation, Jeff Sotzing, I've talked to twice, got his personal cellphone, and they have verbally committed to around a ten-thousand-dollar grant. And that will come towards the end, everybody always wants to wait until the end, which I understand now is, you know, they want to see you make some progress, they want to see you make some headway, and then they help finish it off. But, you know, when I started out, I didn't understand, I was like, no, just give it to us now, let's build it now. But, you know, so, yeah, we continue to work, we got a group of dedicated citizens, the skate park is booming more than it ever has, probably because of the hype of this new possibility of a new skate park, so it's even more crucial now to get it updated than it ever was, I think, but...
And Anthony, this is a state grant under the Tourism Department. Can you talk a little bit about the potential of attracting events here, given a new modern state-of-the-art skate park?
I tried to ask several different communities that have built skate parks that have data, how many people are you getting? It's so new, nobody's taking those numbers, but if I could read this statement from Scott Hayden, quick, from the City of Kearney, they just built the Apollo Skate Park in twenty-fourteen, and it's a ten-thousand-square-foot facility, and that's what really inspired me, when I seen that, I was like, oh, Norfolk, we can do this. So here's the, this is a statement by Scott Hayden, the Park and Rec Director, and he says, "The City of Kearney has been very pleased with the amount of use the new Apollo Skate Park receives. For a ten-thousand-square-foot facility, the skate park probably receives more year-round use per square foot than any other recreational amenity in Kearney. We envisioned the park to utilize largely by kids, but we have been surprised that the facility is an attraction for adults as well. Although we do not keep records on attendance, we feel confident that the skate park draws people to Kearney from a large radius, which not only benefits our city, it also promotes the sport of skateboarding." So, you know, coming from Kearney, that's pretty huge, and Norfolk could use a little more Kearney in a way, but we're on, we're on the right path. So that, to me, skateboarding used to not be considered such a tourist attraction, now that's what it is. I'm forty-five, my oldest son's twenty-five, my youngest thirteen, I've got a grandson that's seven, we all skateboard. We'll travel seven hundred miles to go visit, and we skip the towns that don't have skate parks. We want to go to the modern skate parks, we want to travel around that town, see what else it has to offer, but it's the skate park that gets us there. And typically, it's called park tripping. Kids will often just travel across the country, hitting eight skate parks in a two-week period, you know, and then come back, that's, that's the tourist destination itself, is the skate park. It's, it's new today, you know, it's not what we used to think of as a tourist attraction, I don't think, but it's what's relevant and contemporary with young families and youth today, that's, that's what they're looking for.
And events and competitions are a possibility.
Yeah, you've got to have the venue, and then once you get those competitions, or you have pro teams come down, do what's called a demo, that attracts huge groups of people, or they have music, and art events with the BMX and the skateboard competition, so you get a wide range of variety of people coming to see these events, just because they're so different, so exciting. As well as this tourist attraction, a friend of mine, Carl Hinkley, owns Nowhere BMX, and it's a private stunt show, he does it for the state fair and travels all over the country. He has a compound down near Yumadilla, Lincoln, and near Lincoln, Nebraska, and he says he has twenty-five-hundred visitors come to that, his park, regularly without using, you know, the contests or anything, that's just regular tenants, twenty-five-hundred people a year easily, he said. So it's like, well, that, you know, that makes sense to me, then you add the competitions, and you can double that number or triple it, so...
Other questions for...
So Anthony, if we're fortunate enough to get these grants along with the city's going to put in in your fundraising efforts, how close to your goal are you?
We have, we've been struggling on our own, so we've been doing great advocacy-wise, raising awareness. The people that can't afford to donate are the ones that are giving us money. And you almost want to say, no, keep it, you're a single mother, three children, you know, please, you know, but we've talked to several large potential donors, and like, it was last year, it was kind of bad timing, because one said, well, we gave more money to this project than we ever have, and come back to us next year, and I heard that over and over, we just gave to this guy, and come back next year. So it's not their lack of trying, it's just, we can't make them donate, but we've raised ten-thousand dollars, is what we've really done since August of twenty-sixteen, and three-thousand of that we spent on our preliminary design, because we thought it was really important to show people, this is what a modern skate park looks like. Everyone was envisioning what we have sitting down there, and they're like, why do we want to do that? It's like, no, 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 you're, you're missing the boat, contemporary skate park, so we paid for that funding, and we wanted to show people exactly what we did, but that comes out of our cachet of donation money, but we still, you know, we're just going to keep chugging away, so...
Sure. Well, hopefully, if all this goes in the right direction, that wave just produces kind of what you're going to need to get to the end goal on that, so. And I know you guys have been working extremely hard on it, you're very diligent about it.
Yeah, we're not giving up.
I know you're not.
Twenty-eighteen was, is kind of the year we're hoping, everyone else is kind of out of the way, a lot of these other large projects are out of the way, and we're hoping it's kind of our turn to stand up and do this for the community, so we're just going to keep knocking on people's doors and bugging them until they give us money.
Right. Thank you.
So there has been some initial design work done in terms of what you'd like to see in a new skate park?
Yeah, we went to a world premier skate park designer, Dreamland Skate Parks, out of Lincoln, Oregon, and they, they build, they build the world's, Vans World Championship Park, so they build the best of the best for competition. So we flew them down here, they came in from Sweden, Malmö, Sweden, to work with us and design it, and we wanted it based on safety, we wanted to make sure it could handle BMX and skateboarding, and we wanted to make sure there, there was plenty of room to encompass all that and prevent collisions. So we worked really on design and safety and, and having elements that are easy to ride for beginners, but yet are going to challenge advanced riders, so it's kind of an all-around park, and we wanted it to be a handicap accessible.
How big is the park going to be?
We're hoping to go fourteen thousand nine hundred square feet, where the current area is actually, I think, thirteen thousand eight hundred, so we're only going to push a little bit past the sidewalk, but the largest skate park right now in the state is fourteen five, fourteen six, so just by pushing a little bit, we can claim the largest, not that that's necessary, but, you know, it's kind of a thing to say, I skated the largest skate park in Nebraska.
And so, as far as dollar, how much are you looking, you need to raise to get to that?
The, that park, the estimate we were given was three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars. And that pricing can vary depending on different, you know, construction companies. The average is twenty-five to thirty-five dollars a square foot is what it kind of goes by, so, you know, we're, yeah, we want to make it big, but we want to make it safe and ridable is the main thing, but the biggest is the equal.
Thank you for being here. I was just going to let you know, you know, if this all goes through, I encourage you to build in sustainability, because I was around when we built the original skate park, and it looks pretty rough now, so I don't know if there's any options out there for long-term things, but...
That is really, yeah, why we want to go concrete, because that, that park was built to be a temporary park. It was only supposed to last three to five years. It's been there for over a decade now, fourteen years, so it outlasted its lifespan by three times that it was supposed to, so we, nobody builds with wood anymore, no one builds with those kind of materials anymore. You build in concrete, low cost, low maintenance, it's actually a lot quieter than the wood ramps get, boom, 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 you don't hear nothing, it's just smooth, so... And it's aesthetically beautiful, it'll look great down there, right by that water park, I mean, people will just be attracted to that area. So no, that is, we want this park to be there long after probably all of us are gone.
Any other questions?
I know a few other representatives have some different points to touch on, so I'll leave it at that, and thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment? Can do so now.
I'm basically, I just wanted to testify to the fact that I believe this park will attract tourist dollars and people to Norfolk. I grew up in Wisner, Nebraska, and fell into skateboarding somehow, don't ask me how, but it fell into, fell in love with it, and even, even in that era, in the late eighties, before we, me and my friends, we had a group of about four or five kids in Wisner, and from the age of about ten to sixteen, my, our mothers would, you know, would drive us around the area to the various skate parks, just to skateboard, you know, Sioux City, Omaha, Lincoln, all those different places. And since then, I'm forty-five years old now, I have two sons, twenty and twenty-two years old, and basically throughout their entire childhood, our vacations were basically planned around what skate parks were in the area. And like Tony testified to also, if we're traveling somewhere, we'll stop at every single skate park along the way until we get somewhere, you know, and that's just kind of the way skateboarding culture is now. And with, with skateboarding in the Olympics this year, I believe that, that popularity is, it's only going to get, it's only going to rise in numbers. And I guess, I just wanted to testify to that. Also, growing up in Wisner, you know, we skated in the streets, basically, when there was no skate park around, so we had to be in the streets, which, you know, isn't exactly, you know, most, most cities don't appreciate that. And with, in the, in the shape that the park is in right now, most of the kids around town are still skating in the streets, you know, because the park is in such disrepair. But I don't know, a lot of the things that Tony touched on too, it will be aesthetically beautiful down there. The people that are going to be building it, they know how to do it, that's all they And I think that's about it, that's all I wanted to mention, is you guys have any questions for me?
I don't know if you'll be one of the managers, but who's responsible for the park now?
I believe it is the Parks and Rec Department?
Yeah, it's a subdivision of the Parks and Rec.
Yeah, Pat Mersney has re, like they said, it should only lasted three years, he's rebuilt those jumps time after time after time, so the parks, I think, have done a great job of keeping it going, so...
Right. But there's only so much you can do with repairing that stuff right now. And another thing I'd like to mention also, you know, I do have a lot of experience in coaching and different various athletics, you know, I've coached high school football, baseball, Little League, everywhere from, but the, and the very first thing I ever coached, though, was, was skateboarding. And we plan on incorporating what's called a skate school here at this new skate park, for kids with no experience to come with an experienced skateboarder and show them the basics, and in this new park, we'll just provide a perfect place for that to happen. So there will be some, you know, I guess you could, I don't know if you could call that, I don't know what you would call it, but it will attract young people to a positive activity in this community.
Tony mentioned Kearney, and is it fair to say Kearney's seen as one of the premier skate parks in the state?
I don't know that firsthand, but I have heard it, I've seen pictures of the skate park.
I'm just wondering, for a park like that, how much, how many competitions do they, is it a regular occurrence that competitions take place at these parks, if they're in the right shape?
I believe so, I believe so. I'm not sure exactly how many, but I know seasonally, I would guess that they have at least two to three contests per summer, that's a guess, that's kind of what I would estimate that we would want to do here. And we have the group here that we have, we've put on contests down there, I've put on contests on my own in the past, you know, we know how to, to do events and things like that. And tho, and those things too will bring people, Omaha, Lincoln, all around in the area, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to comment?
Sorry, I'm going to have to sign in.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening to all the council members this, tonight. My name is Scott Hampton, AKA Doug Scott, I work for WJG News Talk, Light Rock ninety-seven five, KEXL, and one-oh-six kicks, KQKX here in Norfolk, Nebraska. I'd like to speak a little bit to the promotional side of things. I've done a couple news segments, I've also, I'll be graduating from Northeast Community College here in May, I've done a few skateboarding park segments for Hawk TV News there from Northeast. I did a segment on the disrepair and the need for a new skate park here in Norfolk for Hawk TV News, and through the Good Life Action Sports, Hawk TV News, and our Facebook page, we saw over eight thousand views alone just on this. It had a graphic for the new skate park, which you all are aware of and have seen. Every morning during my morning show, I staunchly support the building of the skate park, it seems like the only direction which the city has taken with the new riverfront scenery, it is a beautiful program, it only seems smart to me to improve upon that program. And as far as the promotional for, you had talked to Ryan a little bit about the promotion, the events that will go on down there, you can believe that the radio station here in Norfolk will be in full support of the skate park, and any activities that would go down there would be broadcast over fifty thousand watts. It's a very important subject to me in my life, and knowing some of the members here on the board, I believe the opportunities for the Norfolk youth are slim compared to when we were here in, in the City of Norfolk, growing up as kids. So I, I just would like to speak to the support myself that the skate park would receive on a statewide level. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment?
I'm Jacob Wagner, I've rode a skateboard since I can remember, started about five, loved it instantly, never stopped, have been all sides of the states, skated everywhere in between. I've actually been to a camp for action sports, I know that it, it completely took where I started and just bloomed. I, I mean, there's so much benefits that, that skateboarding and BMX and whatever action sport you want to do, it, it grows you from, from inside out. From a young age, you find out, you fall down every time, but you get up, and that's life. I'd just like to say that it's, it's helped me out throughout my whole life, and it's taught me to be a better person.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that perspective. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and move... Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Leanne Baker, just a couple of things I'd like to say. I have two boys, eighteen and thirteen, they utilize the skate park all the time in the summer. And so I'm picking them up and dropping them off, it's amazing how many people use the skate park every day in the summer. And I just, I feel like there should be improvements on this park and it would, it would be, it would look a lot better next to the football field if it was, if it was done right. That's all I really wanted to say, is, is just the fact that these kids use this every day, it should be a nicer park, it shouldn't be so run down the way it is. And just an idea, on the city Norfolk page where it has Miracle Skate Park, there's, I'd just like to suggest maybe having a donate button there too, for people to donate. That's all, thank you.
Anyone else? I want to thank everybody who made the time to be here and shout out in their voices. If no one else, I will close the public hearing and move to item number twenty-seven, look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-eighteen dash fourteen to approve and submit a grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in community development block grant funds for tourism development grant to make improvements to Miracle Skate Park, which will include handicap accessibility for both participants and spectators.
Your honor, I would very happily offer for consideration resolution twenty-eighteen dash fourteen.
Second. Okay, motion second, I'd just make comment right quick that I think this is a great example of citizen engagement. A lot of the people here tonight came to us about two years ago and kicked off this discussion. The city made a commitment at the outset to pledge a hundred and twenty-five thousand, given that that amount could be matched privately or otherwise. And this is a progression in that discussion and I think a very viable step forward in making this become reality, which I think will only do good for the community in terms of enhancing our quality of life and expanding recreational opportunities in the community and serving our youth. So again, thank you for your involvement, your engagement. Any other comments, questions, counsel, before we go to vote on this? No other discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty-eighteen fourteen is adopted.
Okay, that moves us to item number twenty-eight, I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five twenty-two approving a zoning change from I-two heavy industrial district to R-three multiple family residential district on property addressed as two-eleven West Northwestern Avenue. As a note, ordinance number twenty, fifty-five twenty-two passed on first reading at the February twentieth council meeting, on second reading at the March fifth council meeting and was tabled at the March nineteenth council meeting. So we would need a motion to pull from the table before considering the ordinance.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second.
No discussion on the motion to table, so with the motion second, I would ask for your vote, please.
Voting in favor of taking the ordinance off the table, council members Langy, Merrill, Dahlketter, Murin, Faust file voting against the motion. Council members Granquist and Jackson, motion carries.
Motion taken off the table, I would then look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five twenty-two on third reading.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, a motion second, again, as a note, no discussion is allowed on third reading, so I would ask for your vote. Has everyone voted? Now everyone's voted.
Voting in favor of ordinance fifty-five twenty-two on third reading, council members Dahlketter, Murin, Faust file voting against the ordinance. Granquist, Langy, Merrill, and Jackson, it's a tie.
I vote yes to break the tie.
Nope, I dare.
Okay, motion then carries on. That moves us to item number twenty-nine, I will open this public hearing at the request of Vandalay Investments LLC for final land development on property addressed as two-eleven West Northwestern Avenue, and to kick off discussion on this, Val, please.
Thank you, the public hearing tonight before you is for the final plan development. You heard the preliminary plan development and gave approval of that, so the final went back to planning commission. The same reliefs are being asked for, for the zero buffers, the fence height to be six feet in the front, the zero landscape adjacent to the property or the street, and the rear yard setback to be zero also. The only thing that the planning commission recommended was that instead of only being eight-foot fence along the southern property line, they recommend also having an eight-foot fence on the east and the, the west also, otherwise it's the same as what you saw before.
Thank you, gentlemen. So the only change from planning commission was the request eight-foot fence on three sides?
Yes, they recommended eight-foot fence on the three sides and then the six-foot on the north on the front.
Well, did they specify the type of fencing or not, other than privacy fence, and privacy fencing?
Privacy fence was all that was given as a description, and wrought iron on the front. I believe the, the applicants here or a representative, if you're looking for something other than a, just a privacy fence, I guess I was thinking a, a wooden privacy fence, but I have no idea.
Well, that's, it's a planned unit development, and so I was looking for probably a little more specificity in what we were getting for material, whether it was chain link fence with plastic lattice in it, or is chain link fence with tennis screening in it, or if it was actually a, a privacy fence, so.
That's a good question, if you want to specify a look to it, the PD would be the place to, to have that.
What is the language used now, Val, just, just privacy, privacy fencing? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to come forward and make comment can do so.
Good evening, I just wanted to answer Jim's question on the privacy fence. Oh, Ben Conover, I apologize. With the privacy fence, our, I guess, we had used the term privacy fence just in terms of a non-transparent, non-seethrough fence. You know, we plan to use a composite, heavy-duty fence that'll stand the test of time, so it'll be non-seethrough, non-transparent, eight-foot tall, very private. And then on the front, we wanted to use wrought iron fence just for ornamental reasons, just to make the area look nice and keep, keep decorative. Happy to answer any other questions.
Ben, Val mentioned landscaping requirements as they apply to the duty, what, where does that stand currently and what would your plans for?
What do we plan to do for landscaping? We plan to do nice ornamental trees, I think JEO has it drawn on the front, along the terrace there, we plan to do ornamental trees. And then also on the, the west side, that's, you know, it's the area between the, right now, it's kind of a wooden fence between, I think it's Brad's repair shop and the depot, where the concrete starts, we plan to put nice grass in there, do a sprinkler system, make it an area, you know, people could go outside, throw a football, you know, or spend, spend free time. And then we'll also do nice, nice, nice trees and landscaping there. We, we plan to hire guaranteed landscapes to come in and do some additional aesthetic decoration there too, but for sure, we'll have nice grass, nice trees, sprinkler system, and try to make it very presentable.
Any questions for Ben Conover? As you're, this is a multi-family development, some potential playground area for youth potentially as part of this?
Yeah, we, we plan to have, again, kind of looking at the, you know, we're kind of limited in a way unless we tear up concrete, just because so much of it already is existing concrete, which is good concrete. But the area between, you know, that I was talking about before, we talked about maybe having a playground set or something in there, especially where we're gonna have privacy fencing on two sides, where it's gonna be very enclosed, very private. Talked about having some kind of a playground, you know, set there for ki, for kids or families to spend time. I guess that'd be determined, but that's kind of on our agenda, I guess, depending on where our budget ends up.
Okay, Ben, is this, that's right now, does this ordinance have the three sides with eight-foot chain link privacy fencing? As it sits right now?
Three-foot privacy fencing.
Three foot on the sides?
Yeah, three, three foot, so it'd be, if you've seen the building, it's zero lot line, so on the corners of the back of the building to the lot line. And then also on both the east and west sides has eight-foot privacy fencing now. And I guess we put the words privacy fencing, just because when I think privacy fencing or when I buy fencing, I think of non-transparent, non-seethrough, you know, private fencing. And then on the front, it has the, the wrought iron fence, hence the front, I believe that's drawn on there separately, so. Right now on the PD, it does have eight-foot privacy fencing on all three sides.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Again, this is public hearings, anyone wishing to make comment can do so now?
Hello, I'm Glenn Waplehurst and I'm, my wife and I own a property down there, it's the old Perry Hotel or Perry Apartments. And I just wanted to speak to this proposed usage, because as I look at that part of town, I love historic preservation and get really excited about those kind of things in Norfolk, and it seems like in this part of town, for Norfolk, we have a lot of potential to maybe take it from being a little bit blighted to being a part of town where people would maybe enjoy saying, hey, I live in this part of town. There's already a lot of homes down there, and from what I understand, quite a few of the business owners that are in favor of this proposed project. But when you look at the livestock market, it used to be one of the largest ones in the world, you look at the depot, which was kind of Norfolk, Chicago, O'Hare, and then two hotels, the old Hotel Perry, the old La Pratt Hotel, we really have a lot of history in that part of town. And it would seem like the proposed usage of that property is now looking at something that's gonna decrease the traffic flow from what's been most of the last thirty-five years. It would also seem to be some of the kind of traffic that would be maybe more desirable for that part of, of Norfolk. It also would be an opportunity for us to do something in terms of historic preservation. And as you look at a depot, as I've seen, some of those in magazines and pictures when people have redone them, they can be very attractive. And I know it's a pipe dream to see that part of Norfolk look something like the old market, obviously, it's incredibly small compared to that, but we do have some opportunities there, and I just wanted to speak to that and say that I thought that may be something to consider when we look at this project.
Anyone else wishing to make comment? Okay, seeing done, I will close this public hearing. Before that, planning commission report, please.
On March sixth, twenty eighteen, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the final plan development for Norfolk Junction located at two-eleven West Northwestern. Planning Commission recommends the exterior fencing on the south, east, and west sides be eight feet and recommend approval of the request with a seven to one vote.
With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number thirty, would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirty approving the final plan development for Norfolk Junction located at two-eleven West Northwestern Avenue. To note, ordinance number fifty-five thirty was tabled at the March nineteenth city council meeting, so again, would look for a motion to remove from the table.
I'll make the motion, second.
A motion second, any discussion on pulling from the table? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, would then look for a motion to approve ordinance number fifty-five thirty.
I'll make the motion on fifty-five thirty.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion, counseling, questions, comments on this?
I just hope going forward, that all the safety precautions are taken because of the, some of the aspects of the building with, with the location, that all concerns are addressed, especially areas of fire, there's no windows on the back of the building. If there would be a fire in the back of the building, that would be a huge issue, but I know precautions can be taken to fix that. Going forward, I mean, it would be a good thing for Norfolk as long as it's done in the right manner.
Any other discussion, comments, counsel? If not, please vote, or short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance fifty-five thirty, council members Granquist, Merrill, Dahlketter, Murin, Jackson, Faust file. Voting against the ordinance, council member Langy, ordinance fifty-five thirty carries on first reading.
All right, moving on to item number thirty-one, I will open this public hearing to consider submitting a grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development in the amount of five hundred thousand for the Norfolk Depot apartment renovation project to redevelop the building at two-eleven West Northwestern Avenue into ten apartment units. And to kick off this discussion, I think, again, we're here to meet Jane.
Jane, all of Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. Although publication had it correct in the, it does say home funds, it is trust funds, I just want to make note of that. The city of Norfolk is requesting five hundred thousand for, five hundred thousand dollars for the redevelopment of a building located at two-eleven West Northwestern Avenue, which will include twelve thousand five hundred for general admin, twenty-eight thousand five hundred for risk, paint, lead testing, and housing management. The city of Norfolk will be the applicant on this project, Conover Properties will be the property developer and the owner. REG, REG Construction will be the general contractor. The total budget is one million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand with Conover Properties providing that. Fifty-one thousand will be matching funds and seven hundred and two thousand will be leverage funds. The proposed project will include the construction of ten apartments, at least fifty-one percent of those apartments will benefit persons who are a hundred and twenty percent. benefit persons who are a hundred and twenty percent, uh, AMI income. Any questions?
Jan, um, you noted that the city of Norfolk is the applicant. Is that typical?
Um, yes, it is with CDBG funds.
Okay. And that's how we've basically been handling them?
Um, yes, the city needs to be the grantee where, um, but then the Conovers are the ones that are putting in the match.
The, uh, other question, because I, I, when it came through earlier on, it was nine, ten apartments. So this is ten apartments then?
Um, yes, but maybe, Dan, do you want to address the number of apartments?
Jane, can you talk a little bit about the, the housing, the affordable housing trust fund? And is, is this regular practice using, or utilizing this grant for restoration of historic buildings?
Yes, yes. And, and so it's, it'll be open, it's income qualifying for fifty-one percent. So approximately five of those apartments will be needed for ten years to be rented to, uh, persons who are a hundred and twenty percent AMI, which a family of four would be, um, income level of seventy, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Um, and then that, a two-bedroom apartment would rent to them for seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. That would be the top of the rent limit on that. Um, a family of two, the income would be sixty thousand, just over sixty thousand. And then the income rent, the rent on that, those apartments could only be six hundred and fifty-eight. Now HUD will raise those, you know, over the ten years, but that's current for, for this year.
Ben Conover, I would, uh, clarify, we're actually, we're going to have twelve apartments in the building. There's going to be nine two-bedroom apartments. And the way that they're going to be structured is there'll be, um, roughly eight hundred and fifty square foot on the bottom floor with an upstairs loft, which would be another four hundred square feet. So about twelve hundred feet of living space in a two-bedroom apartment, which will be very large. Um, and then there's going to be two one-bedroom apartments, which will be roughly five hundred and twenty-five square feet bottom floor with about three hundred square feet of loft.
So with those numbers, Jan, that means we'd have, um, minimum of seven of them?
It would be fifty-one percent.
Fifty-one percent is, fifty percent is six, so.
Well, yes. And, and basically, um, depending upon how much Ben puts in, um, the grant is for five hundred thousand dollars. So if he would end up putting two million in, let's just say, then it wouldn't be fifty-one percent, it would be less than that. It's a percentage of the five hundred. And until we actually know the actual dollar amount at the end, um, right now, the way it's located, it'd be, it'd be fifty-one percent.
Yeah, we're, our preliminary numbers are the, the total investment in the building, the property is going to be about one point two million dollars. So, um, the number of income qualified units would be either one more or one less. It's going to be right around half, depending on where the exact.
Where that number comes in.
Jane, can you give examples of recent, uh, projects we've used this, the for, the affordable housing trust fund for in the area? Do you have any kind of money to help the company?
You've used it over in Madison.
Yeah, we, we just applied for the exact same grant for last year for the city of Madison. Uh, we bought the old bowling alley there. It used to be a bowling alley and a theater and, um, building that either needed to be redone or a new purpose for it. And, uh, so we're going to have twelve units in that building. Um, in that building, we asked for five hundred thousand. The city of Madison has done a number of these. I mean, they've been approved for like one or two every year for the last three or four years. They've been very proactive about using this money. And it's a competitive situation. So in our area, they give X amount of dollars. And so last year, we had three or four projects that we were competing against. And they're, you know, they're basically going to look at the merit of this project, you know, how good it is, how many units they're getting for the money that they're investing. And they're going to award it to the best project. So, you know, our hope would be is to compete with other cities in our area like Columbus, like, you know, Madison, like Tilden, that are, you know, applying for these same grants to try and get the money.
I know Bloomfield's.
Bloomfield too, yeah.
But we haven't done that in Norfolk though?
Uh, we applied last year, um, for the apartments above the delay, and we weren't awarded.
How many years has the home program been in, in effect?
Uh, those are trust funds, um, and it, it's forever. I mean, yeah. It's not a new program by any means.
And in terms of state support, um, this, the overall level of funding has been sustained at the state level for this program, or increased or decreased, or do, you know?
I really don't know the answer to that, um, mayor, but, um, I, as far as, from my knowledge, it's stayed the same. It's been.
Is there just, I'm, I'm not familiar with this, so I'm asking a question, but, um, is there reporting you have to do to show that you're meeting that fifty-one percent once you start doing that? Because to be honest, originally, you came to us and said, this is going to be high-end apartments. Um, I don't doubt that they are. Uh, you just have a different restriction in here. So how do they, how do they, uh?
I can a hundred percent attest that the amount of reporting is ridiculous.
Is it a monthly, yearly? I, I don't understand, so that's just what I'm asking.
Yeah, the, the way that I understand it, and, and I've been, um, over the last six months, doing the planning and all this stuff that has to go in for the grant in Madison. So basically, what happens is when I, when we spend money, we have to show all of our receipts and show all of our payments. And then it goes to the state and they approve it and they call the contractor. And there's a lot of back and forth that happens. So there's a lot of verification on where the money goes. Um, they are going to be very high-end apartments. And, you know, who's ever renting that two-bedroom, huge apartment for seven eighty-four, they are going to get a steal. And so that was part of what we, I know we had a councilman ask, you know, well, you know, you're building these super high-end apartments, you know, for ten years. And last year, it was five. So last year in our building in Madison, it was a five-year. So this year, they doubled it, right, which is obviously more strict. Um, you know, we did do the math, and, you know, we're probably going to be taken off three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars a month, for each of those income-qualified apartments, those two-bedroom apartments based on market. Um, still in doing the math, it's, it's going to be beneficial for us for our project to get the grant money, even though we're going to sacrifice some money to, you know, some families are going to be fortunate that they're able to save some money on rent, which would be nice.
And then they have to income qualify, um, I believe, I just read that now that's, it's, what, five years to ten years after the sixth year, they have to re-qualify, which I don't know, um, exactly what they're going to do if a person ends up getting a better job or, or, or what on that. But, um, the income, they definitely have to be qualified. They have to be proven. And then they also have to take a renter's wise course that BE is setting up also, so that the renter actually knows, um, that there was some, they're going to value, get some valuable information about renting.
And then this program lasts ten years, as you said? Used to be five, now it's ten?
Yes, and they just changed it this year.
Uh, yes.
I believe, Corey, that all that information, um, also has to go through HUD. So all the paperwork, the process that has to go, I don't know what that is. I don't remember what it all is. But all that has to go, your reporting, um, the income reporting, all has to go through the HUD process before they qualify for this program.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Can you do so now?
Excuse me, mayor, can I ask a question? I don't know if this is an appropriate time to ask this or not, but we're almost going back to the previous item, because what was talked about here was twelve apartments, and the PD has a maximum of ten. And so there is no way to have twelve apartments with the PD the way it stands unless it's changed or once it's finalized, they would have to go through the whole process all over again because that's not an administrative change. I just wanted to throw that out there before it got too far down the road.
Uh, good, good point. Well, um, is, we just approved the plan development on first reading. Uh, can, is this something that could be amended, um, prior to second reading?
We've got to read that, not right now.
Yes.
If it's a, uh, situation where we would have to go back through the whole thing, I'll take the two-bedroom apartments and change it to a large three-bedroom and we'll have ten. I just, I don't want to go back through it all again.
It, you'd still have eleven, I would assume.
We'll have nine, nine two-bedroom and, and a one, uh, one huge three-bedroom. So I don't know, I, we, we were originally going to have eleven. That was probably my mistake. So right now, we're scheduled for nine two-bedroom, two-one bedroom, which would be eleven. We'll take the two-one bedrooms, make it a three-bedroom, we'll have a total of ten.
Ben, I was confused. I thought twelve was the number.
That's the number. I said, I was wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was my, my mistake. So, but either way, we would have, it doesn't matter, we would have ten. So if we have to go back through it.
Thank you.
Again, clarification from, um, city attorney, if there is a need for an amendment to the plan development, that can happen prior to the next reading of the ordinance.
Okay. I'm just, uh, I'm thinking with the, I'm just talking openly. I'm thinking with the, the timeframe I have to close on this building before I lose my deposit and lose my, you know, if I have to wait for another reading, I'm not sure what the.
Oh, you'd have to wait for another reading anyway, because it has just on first reading.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
One, one more question, I guess, on somewhat of that topic.
Yeah.
Number, or section three of that grant application notes as five units. So was the, does a grant application need to be changed to go as to twelve and six?
Okay, so the five units are the five units that are at a hundred and twenty percent income level. So those are your income qualifying ones, not the entire grant, the, not the entire properties. So on that, it's, it's stating how many will be income qualifying.
Is that, is that as a minimum? Because if we went to twelve, it could be seven, not five, right? Am I wrong on that?
Jan and I had originally planned this out for ten units.
Okay.
Literally, going back and forth with my contractor change, we took, because we originally had a large three-bedroom mast, a fifteen-hundred square foot loft. We found a way to break that into two-one bedrooms. So it went from ten units to eleven units. So, um, it would just be a matter of change in the grant. And the, the number of income-qualified units would change based on the amount of sub, the amount of money I put in. It would be a prorata.
Yeah. And it's, with this grant, there's some variables, even when you apply for it. Um, and then they look at the actual overall project and then they decide. And they may not even grant the five hundred thousand we're applying for that. They could come back and say, well, we have three other projects. We'd like to divide the money. You're going to get three hundred thousand. And then, again, that prorating, then it would be down to have them maybe two. Um, so it, it's, and those are really good questions, but it, it kind of depends upon.
What's the timeline on submitting the grant? Uh, if this was approved, when would the grant application be made?
At the end of the month.
Okay. So there would be some time if Ben needs to consult with his contractors on, on exactly how to refine the plan development. There would be time to adjust the grant if necessary. Grant application, right?
Yes, on, on, from my side of it.
If I, if I change the number of units on the, the PD, does that, that goes back to planning commission then?
No.
It just comes back.
It, it can be amended. The ordinance that, um, was just passed on first reading can be amended prior to the third, that's right.
Okay. And that's what we do? Thank you.
We're still in public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Seeing none, move to item number thirty-two, with a motion to consider resolution number twenty-eighteen dash fifteen to approve and submit a grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. Affordable housing trust funds distributed through the Nebraska Affordable Housing Program for five hundred thousand to redevelop the building at two eleven west Northwestern Avenue into apartments.
I'll offer fore-consideration resolution, uh, resolution twenty-eighteen dash fifteen.
Second.
A motion in second. Any further discussion on this, counsel? Seeing none, please vote.
Voting in favor of resolution twenty-eighteen fifteen, council members Granquist, Merrill, Dahlketter, Muren, Jackson, Faust File. Voting against the resolution, council member Langy. Resolution twenty-eighteen fifteen is adopted.
Moving on to item number thirty-three, I will open this public hearing to consider submitting a grant, grant application in the amount of seven hundred and five thousand dollars to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a CDBG grant for the Conti Tech USA Expansion Project at twenty-seven oh one west Omaha Avenue. And to kick off this discussion, uh, okay. Jeff. Evening.
Hello. I'm Jeff Christensen with the Northeast Nebraska Development District, a business loan specialist with that organization. And, uh, the project we have tonight is Community Development Block Grant Funds from the state of Nebraska. And, uh, it's, uh, seven hundred and five thousand dollars total. Uh, seven hundred thousand of that would be lent to Conti Tech USA, Inc., the business out here on, uh, Omaha Avenue. And the other five thousand would go to our organization for grant administration. Um, it's a pass through the city of Colum- or, excuse me, city of Norfolk. Um, so the funds are being applied on behalf of the business through the city. And, uh, there are two representatives from the business here, um, Adam Pracken and David Levy. They're here. So if you have any questions with any of us, you can ensure confidential.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff or, uh, or those representing the project?
What's the general scope of the work?
I'll have those gentlemen address it.
Okay.
Exactly what they're doing.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Evening.
Councilman, uh, David Levy, at a Barrett Home Law Firm, here on behalf of Conti Tech. Now that Jeff sat down, I was hoping he'd take all the hard questions, but I guess I'm here for those. Uh, you know, before I respond to the councilman's question first, I just, I really want to thank your city administrator, economic development staff, Northeast Development District, Nebraska Department of Economic Development. This was a competition to bring this investment and these jobs to Norfolk. We were competing against another site. And all the credit goes to those folks that, that this investment and these jobs are, are coming to Norfolk. So it really, huge credit to them. And I want to thank them. They were fantastic to work with. Um, in terms of the question, the, the work is adding a mixer, a, a second mixer at the plant. And Adam could speak to this a lot better than I can if you want details. But essentially, as I understand it, that second mixer allows them a lot more flexibility so they can be mixing black rubber and colored or, or white rubber at the same time without having to try and alternate between one and the other. And I don't know a lot, obviously, about mixing rubber, but I can imagine that trying to change colors in the same mixer over time is, is not very efficient. And so this will allow them to be a lot more efficient, a lot more productive, and produce a lot, um, a greater variety of products that, that will then go to other plants and be incorporated into other products that then all of us see at the, at the stores.
Well, I appreciate that. I know it was in the accompanying documents, but sometimes having it out in public forums, nice to know too. So thank you very much for that explanation.
Yeah, my pleasure. And I am happy to answer any questions. Uh, other questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. We, there has been some public notice of this, and, uh, right after the first of the year, I believe, and.
Yeah.
Community's very excited about the expansion. Um, in, in terms of jobs, we're looking at up to thirty new jobs?
At least thirty jobs, yeah. And over nine million in investment.
Very good. And again, note, this is a German-owned company and, and that level of international investment, the community's always a good thing.
Yeah, that's right. And, and they speak very highly of Norfolk and having been here. And, uh, they're excited too. It wa- it was fun when they learned of this coming to Norfolk. They were very. It wa- it was fun when they learned of this coming to Norfolk, they were very excited about that, so, it's a great project.
Very good, any other questions? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to comment, do so? If not, we'll close the discussion, close the hearing, and move to item number thirty-four. Look for motion to consider resolution number twenty eighteen dash sixteen submitting a grant application in the amount of seven hundred, uh, seven hundred and five thousand dollars to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a CDBG grant for the Conity Tech USA Expansion Project at twenty seven oh one west Omaha Avenue.
Your honor, I'd move consideration of resolution twenty eighteen dash sixteen.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty eighteen sixteen is adopted.
Okay, moving to item number thirty-five, I will open this public hearing to consider an amendment to section six dash one six two of the city code to amend the provisions of the two thousand twelve International One and Two Family Dwelling Code adopted by the city related to ceiling height. And Val, would you please, uh, make that make sense for us?
Actually, Mayor, I think I'll leave that up to Trent because these are his ceiling heights.
Oh.
You could do it, Val.
Trent, before you get started, I am technically gonna com- combine the public hearings on items number thirty-five and thirty-seven. So, we'll take up the two thousand twelve International Property Maintenance Code, um, uh, in item number thirty-seven as well. So, oh, Eric.
Mayor, council, good evening. So, the ceiling height came up, um, multiple times, it's come up over the years. Where we've been in basements, uh, and they just didn't quite make it. And the older homes, uh, whether they're block construction or poured or the old, you know, brick or whatever the case may be, uh, a lot of low ceilings. We wanted to lower them ceilings just a little, um, especially, we got areas in town of block construction, if they would've went one more course, another eight inches, it would, it wouldn't have been an issue. But, um, we felt, uh, doing, uh, many studies and looking around us at keeping and lowering that from seven feet to six foot eight, that it wasn't gonna be an issue. I'm sure it's really not an issue for me, but, uh, no, it, in basements, we have been in basements that they've, they've remodeled without permits. Um, and maybe a ceiling fan might be at five, you know, that real low. Well, that's a hazard for us, especially on EMS calls, fire calls, we're usually on our knees, definitely not a problem there. Um, but, uh, we, we want a quality of life where, and really, it comes down to quality of life and air exchanges. I mean, them rooms, you can't make them so tight that you can't have air exchange. So, we felt six foot eight would be, um, a, a compromise, we, but it's still doable. And definitely, we want people to come in and get those permits, and it would allow them to. And when they know they can't, I mean, if we're gonna deny them, they're not gonna come in. So, and we've had, uh, we've had instances, even city employees, that we've had instances where they were an inch off. And, an inch is an inch, and, you know, it, and now changing this, it would, it would work for them as well. So, I'm open for discussion, questions, um, thoughts, concerns?
Trent, does that address the, uh, two thousand twelve International Property Maintenance Code amendment as well?
Yes, yes, yeah, those, the, the ICC code, they, they speak to each other for the most part. Some of these other changes, if they didn't, if they weren't exact, one might have mentioned hallway, another one mentioned, uh, you made a laundry room or whatever, we just made them read the same in both. So some of them changes are, are very minor. The six foot eight is new. The exception for, uh, going under obstructions, so beams, girders, ducts, or other obstructions, uh, within six foot four, that's really not a change. We, we had an exception to go underneath the beams and stuff like that before, but not the entire ceiling, so...
So, Trent, um, any reasoning behind why the code was, you know, the code writers wrote it for that? They, they apparently should've had some form of reasoning other than that?
They really, all this, all the, the work I've done looking into that, it really didn't, they didn't have, really have a perfect reason for that. Because even on main floors, you still see some of them below seven feet. Uh, we feel that any new construction, um, in fact, most basements now, new construction, they're, they, I've seen nines. And, good and bad, I suppose, but then again, it doesn't hurt our feelings on any of that, and people want ceiling fans in their basements and...
So, and that was bringing up, that was kind of my second question because this isn't really, I mean, this addresses all construction, whether it's new or, or, or existing that way, correct or not?
Oh, oh, so residential one and two family basements built prior to January first, two thousand, uh, which contain habitable or non-habitable spaces, hallways, corridors, bathrooms, toilet rooms, laundry rooms, shall have a ceiling height of not less than six foot eight. Residential basements built on or after January one, two thousand, which, with areas shown above in this section, shall have a ceiling height of not less than seven feet. So after that two thousand mark, we, we really haven't seen anything lower than seven feet.
No, I, that's what I was getting at, is that's in there so that suddenly developers and builders can't go in there and do a bunch of eleven block basements and suddenly, well, we're okay for six foot eight, we're, we're not really okay with it, it's, we're, we're making it so that we don't have the problem.
That's correct.
Thank you, Trent, any other questions? This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment, do so? Seeing none, I will move to close, uh, look for planning commission reports for both amendments to section six dash one, six two, and section six dash one, seven, one eighty-three.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on March twentieth, twenty eighteen to consider an amendment, uh, to section six dash one sixty-two of the city code to amend the provisions of twenty twelve One and Two Family Dwelling Code adopted by the city related to ceiling height. The planning commission recommended approval of the amendment on a nine to zero vote. And the planning commission also met on March twentieth to consider amendment to section six dash one eighty-three related to ceiling height and approved the amendment with a nine to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearings and move to item number thirty-six. The motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirty-two approving an amendment to section six dash one sixty-two of the city code to amend provisions of the two thousand twelve International One and Two Family Dwelling Code adopted by the city related to ceiling height.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for consideration, number fifty-five thirty-two.
Motion in second, any further discussion on this? None, short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section six dash one sixty-two of the official city code to amend the provisions of the twenty twelve International One and Two Family Dwelling Code adopted by the city related to heat, ceiling height, to provide when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five thirty-two carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-five thirty-two on second and third.
Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules, any further discussion? None, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five thirty-two carries on second and third.
This is, uh, item number thirty-eight, the motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirty-three approving amendment to section six dash one eighty-three of the city code to amend the provisions of the two thousand twelve International Property Maintenance Code adopted by the city related to ceiling height.
Your honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five thirty-three.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, please, uh, short title, Beth.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska to amend section six dash one eighty-three of the official city code to amend the provisions of the twenty twelve International Property Maintenance Code adopted by the city related to ceiling height, to provide when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five thirty-three carries on first reading.
Your honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-five thirty-three on second and third.
Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules, any further discussion? None, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five thirty-three carries on second and third.
Okay, moves us to item number thirty-nine, I'd open this public hearing at the request of Innate Development LLC to consider a zoning change from R-one single-family residential district to R-two one and two-family residential district on property generally located a half mile south from the intersection of Benjamin Avenue and Victory Road. And Val, can you kick off discussion, please?
Yes, thank you, um, you'll see, I brought up the zoning map, this might be a little helpful for people. Uh, Legacy Bend goes from this tree line down here, right above the R-one label, and all the way up to some of this R-three. What we're doing for a zone change is just this R-one section down at the, the southern end. Because, a couple reasons, um, it's a straight horizontal line and that zone line would cut through some of their proposed lots, so it doesn't follow what their proposed planning would go with. And also, um, they're planning on doing more of a traditional neighborhood design, uh, the front porches, the smaller lots potentially. Um, and in that first phase, you'll see some sixty-five foot wide lots, and in R-one zoning, our minimum lot width is seventy. And so it would just make it easier, I think, in the long run to have it all R-two zoned for single-family detached houses. That way, you wouldn't have to figure out where R-one and R-two split.
Okay, thanks, Val, so, makes this area more consistent in terms of zoning throughout. This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment, can do so now? Seeing none, uh, planning commission report, please, Beth.
Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on March twentieth at twenty eighteen at the request of Innate Development LLC to consider a zoning change from R-one single-family to R-two one and two-family residential on property located one half mile south of the intersection of Benjamin Avenue and Victory Road, and the planning commission approved the request on a nine to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I'll close the hearing, move to item number forty, look for motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirty-four approving a zoning change from R-one to R-two on property generally located half mile south from the intersection of Benjamin Avenue and Victory Road.
I'll make the motion, your honor. Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this, council? None, short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five thirty-four carries on first reading.
Your honor, I'll move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-five thirty-four on second and third.
Second, your honor.
Motion in second to suspend the rules, if no further discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five thirty-four carries on second and third.
Okay, item number forty-one, I'd open this public hearing at the request of Oband Group Inc. for a final plan development on property generally located southeast corner of Thirteenth Street and Omaha Avenue. Again, Val, help us out on this.
Okay, hey, this is the hotel in the southeast corner of Thirteenth and Omaha. This is their final plan development, you saw the preliminary plan development here about a month ago. Um, nothing has changed from the preliminary to the final, they are still asking for relief from the, uh, front yard, forty foot minimum to be twenty-five foot front yard, and the, uh, relief of the building height from forty-five to sixty.
Sixty, they're planning for four stories, is that correct, Val? Was that mentioned in the initial?
I don't know if it's a full four stories or not.
Four? And the, uh, reduction in the front yard setback was because?
That was to allow a double-sided parking down the center. Otherwise, the, the building would be pushed too far to the west and you would only have, um, a single row of, uh, parking down the center. This allows them to be double parked.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to make comment, can do so now? Evening. The list is growing longer.
It sure is. All right, I am Connor Works, I am from Lincoln, Nebraska, I am representing Norfolk Extended Lodging LLC, and I am here just to answer any questions you might have on it.
Okay, thanks Connor, any questions for Connor on this panel? What's your timeline, Connor, how, when do you hope to get started?
We're hoping to get started this fall, and then open up early spring of twenty twenty, so to give the summer traffic to that, spring and summer of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay.
Yes.
Very good. Well, we're excited about the project. Any other questions?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment, can do so now? Seeing none, uh, planning commission report, please.
On March twentieth, twenty eighteen, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the final plan development for Nightcap Edition located in the southeast corner of Thirteenth Street and Omaha Avenue, and recommends approval with a nine to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I'll close the hearing, move to item forty-two, I'd look for motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirty-five approving the final plan development for Nightcap Edition located southeast corner of Thirteenth Street and Omaha Avenue.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five thirty-five.
Second, your honor.
Okay, any further discussion on this, council? If not, short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, and providing when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five thirty-five carries on first reading.
Your honor, I'd move we suspend the rules and pass the ordinance fifty-five thirty-five on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules, any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance thirty, fifty-five thirty-five carries on second and third.
All right, here we are at the regular agenda. Item number forty-three, I'd look for motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five twenty-nine approving a zoning change from I-one light industrial district to R-two one and two-family residential district on property addressed as fourteen eleven South Second Street. As a note, ordinance number fifty-five twenty-nine passed on first reading only at the March nineteenth meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration, ordinance number fifty-five twenty-nine.
Second.
Motion in second, Val, can you give us an update on this, please?
Yes, uh, you directed me last time to contact the owners to the north and to the south of this so that it would hopefully be all one zoning. I was able to contact the owner to the north, which is probably the, the most, more important one of the two. Um, she has turned in, is in the process of turning in an application to request a zone change to R-two. She did not make the, uh, the deadline for today, so it'll probably, you'll probably hear it the first one in May, would be my guess. So you would have all of those then to be R-two. I did contact and leave a message for the southern owner there at the, the very corner of Northwestern and Second, and he has not responded back, I'll try to call him one time, but, um, I was pretty much told by the neighbors that I wasn't gonna expect to get a, a phone call back, more than likely. But, at least then, you wouldn't have a residential industrial, residential industrial, you'd have all residential and then just that one last lot, potentially would be industrial there on the corner, so, um...
So the second request does make the change a little more uniform?
Mm-hmm. So if you want to leave this tabled until that one comes on, or if you wanted to move forward with this tonight, I guess that would be up to you, I mean...
Counsel thoughts? Council thoughts?
In the Planning Commission notes, there was something about how they denied it because they could only build like ten feet. They would only have ten feet to build if it, if they did have to rebuild. Can you speak to that?
That's where if it were industrial on both sides of the lot, then you would have that buffer yard between residential and industrial. So you wouldn't have that buffer yard anymore.
So if we pass them all, we're good?
Right, so you wouldn't have that forty-foot buffer yard to the north anymore because you wouldn't have industrial to the north. And then I think Clint and I kind of talked about this, but we didn't come to a conclusion. There's, there's two things in code. There's the buffer yard requirement, but there's also the requirement that says you can build back to the same footprint that you had before. So I, I'm not quite sure which one would, would win with that one onto the south.
Okay, thank you.
We'll hope that never happens.
When, your honor, I guess, kind of, you know, in the interest of how we were expressing this the last time, especially if the second applicant comes on in. It would make it more pliable and acceptable. And along with the fact that Mr. and Mrs. Magnifero, when they were here, said they had no urgent, you know, nothing was really pushing them other than the public notice that was, was out there. Those two statements or facts being in place that way, I guess I would make a motion that we table this at least until the next meeting.
I'd second that.
Seems like a sensible option. Motion to table and a second. Any further discussion on that, council? If not, please vote.
All council members present in the affirmative. Motion to table carries.
Okay, it moves to item number forty-four. I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirty-six creating paving district number five thirteen, Georgia Avenue, providing for paving of Georgia Avenue from First Street to Third Street and Second Street from Georgia Avenue to Sycamore Avenue.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second.
Okay, Steve, can you give us some background on this, please?
Mayor and council members, before you is an ordinance that would create paving district five thirteen for Georgia Avenue. This is part of our, I guess what we've been calling our gap paving needs here in the community. This is, there are three of them on the agenda today, Georgia, Fifteenth Street, and Square Turn. The Georgia Avenue project would be created as a paving district. This would include Georgia Avenue from First Street to Third Street. And in addition, we would also pave Second Street from Georgia to, I cannot recall the name of the street, south of that, Sycamore. I know the administration, past administration, has been working on this for several years. And as we have looked at moving this forward, we have met with a subcommittee and proposed some cost sharing of this with the local residents to lower the burden on them. I can't give you an exact number, but we're looking at about a fifty, fifty percent cost share with those neighbors along Georgia Fifteenth Street and Square Turn to help move these projects forward. I think we recognize that certainly as a city, it's desirable to have those streets paved. It provides improved access for those homeowners along there. In the case of Georgia, provides improved access for the school and the YMCA to some of their facilities north of Georgia. So we think this, we've reached, you know, a solution here that, that kind of spreads that burden amongst the city as well as the landowners compared to a traditional assessment that would put a hundred percent of that burden on those homeowners. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer those.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, the, the fifteenth street, that's part, that's five fourteen as well, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So in the cost sharing?
Same.
Same. Thank you.
Formula on all three of these projects would be the same, fifty percent cost share.
Just to talk a little bit about the others and then save a little bit of conversation there, five fourteen and five fifteen are set up as, those are gap paving projects. They're structured under a paving district for just reasons of tracking, but they are gap paving projects. It would be completed according to state statute eighteen dash two thousand one to two thousand four. So those, those are the sections that you can just call in, those sections, and then we put together the projects and build those. They cannot remonstrate against those projects. Five thirteen is a, an actual paving district that would be established for that, that could be remonstrated against. We do have the school district that is in favor of the project as well as the YMCA, and so they would have over fifty percent of the land share along there. The other benefit to that is we put the sidewalk in at the same time on the, on that project on Georgia. The other two projects, we will be putting the sidewalk in. However, those will have to have sidewalk districts created at the time plans are complete.
You know, from the time I got on council, these are three areas that I've continually heard about needing to be addressed and finally paved. So good staff work in creating, I think, a sensible solution to get the job done, working with partners where possible to do that. And taking on some of the, the burden of the cost and the investment moving forward to modernize our infrastructure throughout the entire community. So. Any other, any questions or further comments, council? If not, short title, please.
An ordinance creating paving district number five thirteen in the City of Norfolk ordering the construction of street improvements therein and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five thirty-six carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-five thirty-six on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion second, suspend the rules. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five thirty-six carries on second and third.
Okay, item number forty-five. I'd look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty eighteen dash seventeen approving improvement of unpaved Fifteenth Street as outlined in gap paving district number five fourteen.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration resolution twenty eighteen dash seventeen.
Second.
Okay, anything further to add on this, Steve, or any questions about this one?
The only thing I'd add here on this one, this is Fifteenth Street, this would include a section of Fifteenth Street to the, to the west. It kind of dead ends there into an area, but I do believe there are, there's garage access, property access off of that street. At the north end of this particular segment, I believe that's Corporation Gulch that runs through there, if I recall correctly. There's a large box covered running at a diagonal underneath that intersection. I believe we can get the sidewalk in on, along that. There's a chain link fence and stuff in there, but we'll have to look at that through the design process and just see what fits in there, but. Otherwise, yes, it's, this is like, actual gap paving projects would be, you would call this in under, again, under section state statute eighteen dash two thousand one to two thousand four. We would prepare the plans and specifications, and then at that time, create the sidewalk district to put the sidewalk in at the same time.
And again, area residents were notified of this.
We have had, I have had some contact with area residents, not all, not all residents.
All right, any questions, any further questions on this? Okay, now please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty eighteen seventeen is adopted.
Item forty-six. I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirty-seven creating gap paving district number five fourteen, which provides for paving all that portion of Fifteenth Street from Park Avenue to Hayes Avenue and a portion of Hayes Avenue extending west from Fifteenth Street.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for consideration ordinance number fifty-five thirty-seven.
Okay, anything further to add there, Steve, or any questions on this?
Nothing further to add. Be happy to answer any questions.
Further discussion, council? If none, short title, please.
An ordinance creating gap paving district number five fourteen in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five thirty-seven carries on first reading.
I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-five thirty-seven on second and third.
Okay, motion second, suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five thirty-seven carries on second.
Item forty-seven. I'd look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty eighteen dash eighteen approving improvement of unpaved Square Turn Boulevard as outlined in paving district number five fifteen.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of resolution twenty eighteen dash eighteen.
Second.
Hey, Steve, anything to add on Square Turn?
A very similar project. This would be Square Turn Boulevard from Wilson Avenue, just south, just south of Wilson Avenue over to its intersection with.
Pardon me?
Oh, eleven street and Rose, Rosen Avenue. The thing I'd add there is this is a very odd intersection, and until we get through design, I couldn't take a stab at what that is necessarily going to look at or look like. This is going to take some, some work with the homeowners in that association, in that area or in that district as we work through that to come up with something that is safe and functions as an intersection and provides the access that the community needs in that area. I know kind of from monitoring that down in there that there's quite a bit of traffic that tends to use that. I'm not exactly sure why, and it must be a shortcut from one spot to another, but again, just want to make sure that what we come up with geometrically is the right answer for that spot.
Okay, thanks, Steve. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty eighteen eighteen is adopted.
Item forty-eight. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirty-eight creating gap paving district number five fifteen, which provides for paving Square Turn Boulevard from just south of Wilson Avenue to Grant Avenue and Wilson Avenue from the west side of Eleventh Street to Square Turn Boulevard.
Your Honor, I introduce ordinance fifty-five thirty-eight.
Second.
Okay, anything further on this, Steve?
I do not have anything further. I'd take any questions.
No question. This is one of those that, as, as long as I've been on the council, I've been hoping to see this thing get paved. And we've gone through ups and downs, and this is something that should have occurred very many years ago. So. Totally behind this, so.
Amen to that. The long, arduous journey is over.
Yes.
Well, not.
It's not over, it's not paved.
It started. Processed. The end of, the beginning of the end is in sight, something like that. Any other questions, comments, council? Okay, if not, short title, please.
An ordinance creating gap paving district number five fifteen in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five thirty-eight carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-five thirty-eight on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion second, suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five thirty-eight carries on second and third.
Okay, item forty-nine. I'd look for a motion to consider approval of an engineering services contract with McClary Engineering Incorporated for the gap paving projects, two thousand eighteen project for an amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second.
Okay, Steve, can you give us some background?
Yes, mayor, council members, before you here is, is a consultant contract from McClary Engineering. McClary is a engineering company located here in town at five oh two Madison Avenue. They did the Embrace Park project plans and specifications for us. That project went well. Looking at our resources, we do not have the resources internally. We did have this budgeted for engineering services. And so we are recommending a contract with McClary Engineering to prepare the plans and specifications for these gap paving projects.
Okay, any questions for Steve on that? Straightforward. Right, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item fifty. I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirty-nine authorizing issuances of various purpose bonds for permanent financing of sewer district two forty-seven in the principal amount not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five thirty-nine.
Second.
Okay, Randy, can you kick off discussion on this?
Yes, your honor. We currently have outstanding one million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars bond anticipation notes that mature November one, twenty eighteen for this district. This would authorize up to one point five million dollars of bonds to pay off those notes. We don't think we'll need that much, but we're going to bid this out with the three local banks. And also retain the option to go with Emeritus in case we don't receive any favorable bids from the banks. We had a problem with the last issue we did for the Railroad Transportation Safety District where we only got one bid from the local banks, and it wasn't a good bid. And so we kind of backpedaled at the last minute and went with Emeritus. Restructuring this one up front to make that easier if we have to go that route. And since it's going to be bid competitively, we allow a little bit extra room in the amount of bonds we think we might need in case they want to bid it with original offering premium or upfront fees. I doubt that will happen, but this would allow for that. We think the actual bond issue will be about one million four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Since we did the special assessments for this over twenty years, bond issue will also be a twenty-year bond issue. And this bond will provide remaining funds we need after we apply, four hundred ninety-four thousand dollars that we received from special assessment payments on sewer district two forty-seven. They paid within the first fifty days, they didn't pay any interest, and they got a discount. So we got quite a bit of money in upfront on that district. They have a five-year par call, recommend approval on all three readings so we can get the solicitation on these going with the local banks.
Thanks, Randy. Good development on opening you up to competition from area banks and that. Any questions for Randy? Okay, no further discussion. Short, short title, please.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation various purpose bonds, series twenty eighteen of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying off interim financing for the costs of sanitary sewer system improvements in sanitary sewer extension district number two forty-seven. Prescribing the form of the said bonds, providing for the levy and collection of taxes to pay the same, entering into a contract on behalf of the city with the holders of said bonds, authorizing officers of the city to make arrangements for the sale or placement of the bonds and to designate the final terms, rates, and maturity schedule for said bonds within stated parameters and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Council member Jackson absent. Ordinance fifty-five thirty-nine carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-five thirty-nine on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion second, suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance, council member Jackson absent. Ordinance fifty-five thirty-nine carries on second and third.
And item fifty-one, last but not least, I'd look for a motion to consider resolution twenty eighteen dash nineteen calling one million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars of outstanding. of outstanding series twenty seventeen bond anticipation notes for redemption on or shortly after May third, two thousand eighteen.
Your Honor, I'd move resolution number twenty eighteen dash nineteen.
Second.
Okay, again, Randy, please.
Yeah, this is just the flip side of the ordinance you just approved. This is actually calling the bond anticipation notes that are outstanding for this. Expect the call date will probably be about May fifteenth. That will give us time to get bids in from the banks and make sure we got a good bid before we actually call, call the notes.
Okay, any questions for Randy on that? Comments? If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen is adopted.
Alright, that's all she wrote. Hopefully we can still catch the basketball game. Good evening.